Call to order, the Ironton City Council meeting, March ninth, twenty twenty-three. With us for invocation tonight, we have Pastor Sally Schisler with Christ Episcopal Church. If you would stand for invocation and remain standing for the bled of allegiance and be
Let us pray for those who. Almighty God, our heaven above, send down upon those who hold office in this community upon us, spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in your office, for those who will be needing for all people, for Jesus Christ our Lord.
Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call please, Mark.
Cleary.
Here.
Haney.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Hop.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Perry.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Next on the agenda, we have the approval of minutes from the Public Utilities Committee meeting of February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, the Finance Committee meeting of February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, and Finance Committee meeting of February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Do we have any adds, additions, or additions to those minutes? Those minutes are sustained as approved. Next on the agenda, we have audience participation. If you'd like to address council, please step to the podium, state your name and address, and we'll have five minutes to.
I'd like to go with that, okay?
Yes.
Hello, everybody. My name is James Gordon, lifelong resident of Ironton, Ohio. Proud resident, by the way. I'm here to speak with you today in regards to a event that I'd like to hold for Earth Day on April the twenty-second. It will be from nine to one. What we will do is we'll be focusing on local parks in the community and surrounding areas and doing a cleanup. After that cleanup, what we'll be doing then is we'll be kind of celebrating the cleanup, having a hot dog social in Molten's Field, okay? And I would like for you guys to join in, help me spread the word and get the word out. I am currently working with Third and Center, and we are organizing this Earth Day. Not asking for anything, just asking for help, asking for, you know, some participation.
What date was that, twenty-first?
Four, twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Yeah. Did I say twenty-second, correct?
Right.
Oh, and by the way, I live at eight fifteen South Seventh Street, Ironton.
Greg, what, you said Molten's Field, is that where you're meeting?
No, we won't be meeting there. There'll be more information to come.
Okay.
Yeah, what I'm doing today is pretty much coming here to get your blessing, try to get some steam behind this thing so it's really a nice community event.
Just, yeah, either contact myself, mayor, or somebody, and we'll get, once you get everything finalized, where you're going to meet that morning, what time, and maybe like a little agenda together, you know, just some of the.
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like you guys are all right with it, so I'll have all the information ready to go for you next month. We're gonna, we're gonna do Facebook ads, things of that nature, and put out a video, try to garner as much, much steam as possible can, as most participation as possible can. Just have a good time, have a bit, come out and meet your neighbors, you know what I mean, that's what I want.
Sounds good to me.
All right.
Do you need any, I mean, is there, you have equipment, everything?
I pretty much got it all sewed up, man, I'm just coming to you guys tonight, just like I said, trying to garner some participation. If you could help me out with maybe the logistics of picking up the trash or something like that, tell me where I can put the trash, things of that nature, but we'll get to you on that. I know, I know there's places at these local parks where we can place trash, and I don't foresee a ton of trash being collected.
Yeah, not, not at the parks necessarily.
No, but, but around, around those surrounding areas that are, that surround the park. What we want people to do is just get back.
Right.
Ever since COVID, everybody's been kind of stuffed in the house, everybody's looking at their phones, everybody's playing games all the time, let's get out and play some basketball.
I agree. I was just talking about that the other day.
Play some tennis or skate or whatever you do, man, let's encourage people to get back out here, more importantly to, you know, socialize and money, you know?
Sounds good.
Perhaps we could coordinate with Mike Pemberton where they can place the trash that it can be picked up.
Yeah, well, yeah, and also have, maybe work with the rec crew and go ahead and have those receptacles emptied that Friday, so we'll definitely get some logistics together.
We're gonna have bags, gloves, trap, you know, trash grabbers, all that good stuff. I kind of got that locked down already. The park's clearly not going to be an issue because we're going to clean it up, we'll be there anyway. The only thing that I foresee is just the logistics of getting the trash out of there, that's pretty much it.
Good deal.
That's what I mean, stay in support of it.
All right, like, like I said, reach out, and if we need to help, if you need to help spreading the word.
I certainly will, certainly will, appreciate you guys.
Good deal. Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Travis Klein, C O, I think you all know me. Wanted to be here because of the contracts here, so if you have any questions, you can answer us, but I'd like to introduce Michelle Rockmore. Michelle has come on board. We recruited her from some folks that we know well, O B O D C, comes with a lot of experience, and actually, Michelle's been with us for a year now.
Over a year now.
So, the folks in the city, I think, Billy knows very well, and anyhow, we had a whole series of meetings here today, so Michelle is here, and I thought this would be good to introduce you to her. And then we have also brought on another new staff person, Jessica Keaton, we've been able to recruit her. Been pretty busy last year, and I think last year is just a small piece of what we're anticipating coming down with the new year with the Appalachian Community Grant Programs and things like that, so we wanted to make sure we have plenty of capacity, we could definitely use them, so. If there's any questions on the contract or whatever, people are glad to answer.
I don't have any questions about it, I just, do you care to, just to make, well, but do you care to kind of give us a rundown, just so, you know, public knowledge of, of some of the opportunities, grant opportunities?
I'll let Michelle do that.
That this has provided the city?
I brought a list.
Usually, I apologize, usually you make copies for both, you go ahead and make a leave of it.
Of course, twenty twenty-three, we're working towards the A C G P program, the five hundred million that's come down from the state, and we're, we're trying to wrap our heads around all that, but some of the projects in twenty twenty-two, and I apologize, I should have grabbed my glasses. Oh, and Etna Park, the bids came into day, and it was a good bid, so that shelter and that fencing will be done before Memorial Day.
Awesome, awesome.
I wanted it, I put the deadline before Memorial Day, so it was, you know, ready for the summer.
Awesome.
So, some other projects that we did in twenty twenty-two, of course, the facade repel and the Roanoke. The Ironton South Third Street, we worked on the E D A project, the A R C project on getting that funded, and it's, it's getting very close to moving forward, just a few final documents that the Economic Development Administration has to receive. Riverfront Development, I don't know how familiar they are with all these projects, okay? The containers and it's under design, we've made the first payment, or the city's made the first payment on that.
And we got the, the.
Seventy-four, seventy-eight. Is that, that was the seventy-four, seventy-eight thousand for the extension of the walking path?
The D N R, yes.
The Transit parking deck is another project, eight million dollar project. The mining reclamation, which is all part of the regional sports complex, about three million dollars there, and I put the regional sports complex on here, recreational, that's to be determined. We, we plan on going for the gold there, at least fifty million, maybe a hundred million for all the development that's going to go with it. The First and Pine Street, it's completed with a few minor additions that will be made. And South Ironton Storm and Cemetery project, and there's probably a few more that could have been added, but there's just so much going on right now, it's, it's crazy.
What do you estimate that's been brought into the city money-wise?
Oh, gosh, just from these.
It's kind of hard to, to encompass, like a lot of these, like the Panzer Deck and things, that's an eight million dollar project.
Right.
But time to get their design and construction, that's going to be about a three-year process and some of these others, but I think we're probably in.
The, the E D A project is roughly around two million, the mining reclamation, three million, so maybe around fifteen, fifteen to twenty million.
It's an incredibly good investment to, to work with, I think.
Do you have questions of me, since I haven't really met any of you? I've met many before.
Where are you from?
I'm from Saugus County. I worked at a High Valley Regional Development Commission for twenty-one years, I was the development direct, development director there, and I worked for, or Saugus County Commissioner for six years and left, and I'm here, so I have, you know, twenty-nine, thirty years experience in community development, economic development, grant writing, grant administration, and went out, Rummenroth approached me, I was like, okay, let's do this, because you guys, you guys have a lot of great things going on here, so I've known him for twenty-five to twenty-seven years, and I will never have the knowledge that he has, but.
She will.
I'm going to try really hard for you guys.
Good deal. Greg.
Sounds like you haven't missed a beat since Cindy left, so, so thanks, but.
Well, Cindy's still with us.
She's there.
She's a still another fan, and she's been working with us side by side.
So, thank you, and you mentioned Sayota County, you're not a Weathersburg fan, are you?
Well, I'm from West Portman, so what do you think?
You hate him as much as we.
Yeah, Weathersburg, Ironton, Weathersburg West, it's, it's all one and the same.
I like you then.
Anybody else?
We'll leave this here with you guys, if you want to look here.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
For working with you some more and in the future, and.
You'll be seeing more of her.
Yeah, I'll probably start coming to some town to meet, maybe not, maybe not everyone, but maybe once a month or once every couple months, if we have things going on that we want to let you know about, so.
Sound good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to ask you, Chris, maybe Chris knows, what is it?
Rock Morton.
Rock Morton.
Good evening, Council, I'm the main declare, my home is at seventeen forty-two North Second Street. I'm here this evening as representative of Third and Center. A little bit of history lesson for you, in nineteen eighty-seven, March was recognized by President Reagan to give individuals with developmental disabilities encouragement and opportunities that they need to lead productive lives and to achieve their full potential. In honor of Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, Third and Center has partnered with Lawrence County Developmental Disabilities and is proud to host the Art for All event. Art for All is going to be a fun and creative outdoor art experience for all members of the D D community. The day will feature an interactive mural installation on the flood wall with artist Chelsea Potter from Bluegrass Mama Creations in Russell, Kentucky, being the lead artist. We would like to invite council to attend this event on March the twenty-third from eleven to one. In addition to that event, like Jane said, on April twenty-second, we will be hosting the Trash Bash event, which will be the community park cleanup event, and so I would like to take this opportunity to shamelessly plug our partnership opportunity that's still available. Our funding comes from grants, from business members of our community, and from individual community members. Information about the partnership opportunity is available on our website, on our Facebook page, and for more information, you can send us an email at thirdandcenter@gmail.com. That partnership opportunity is available until March the fifteenth, that's a one-time contribution that allows your business organization or for you as a person to be advertised at every single event that Third and Center does for the year, and this year, our list is quite extensive, so. In addition to our partnership opportunity, I would like to encourage everyone to sign up as a volunteer for Third and Center. We are a completely inclusive organization, and we welcome all members of our community. The sign up is available on our website at thirdandcenter.com.
Ma'am, thank you, the work that you've done in and around the community, fantastic. Included in this park cleanup reclamation project, do you intend to include Ninth Street Park? I ask only because it's technically not a city park, it's pent-up housing, but there might be some things.
Yeah, so the way that we're going to break this, the cleanup event up into zones, so we have, we'll have one team that starts at Storms Creek, and they'll cover the Storms Creek Landing, the Second Street Flood Wall, and the Underpass, another team at the Etna Copass Park, Etna Street Park, Molten's Field, and the Ninth Street Park. And it's not just the park, the zones will be laid out, depending on the number of volunteers that we have sign up, the zones will be laid out in a block radius around the park itself. So, I mean, you say there's not a lot of trash, but I beg to differ, last week I got a whole entire eighty-gallon trash bag off of the flood wall on North Second Street, so there's the problem in our city, we have a lot of trash, and it's sad, but I think if we continue through efforts, James is our project coordinator on this event and several other cleanup events that we'd like to see done throughout the year, hopefully we can just increase people's awareness of like, hey, if you're out, pick up the trash, like you're taking a walk, pick up that water bottle and throw it in the trash, so.
I appreciate that, as a former projects kid, that you are including the Ninth Street Park.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's a fantastic part of the county.
Sorry, Greg.
You may have, were you going to mention our cleanup currently going on?
No, I was going to ask for a location for the art.
Sure, yeah.
It's just going to be Riverfront area?
It's, the, we wanted to make sure that the area that we chose was fully accessible, and when I went to do the survey, there was one double panel flood wall that was very gross, like what was on there would be the terrible language, so that's the spot that we chose, and it's the access road for the overpass, right, so you go there, and you turn left, and where we, we've done the Audrey Hepburn mural there, and there's several other small, the Bumblebee, it's right in that area before you make the curve into where the historic mural starts, so it's right there. It was the closest accessible place, it's level, you know, we can, we'll share some things in there easily, so. And for, we did have this question, there will be accessible restroom facilities on the day of the event, and then snacks available and some other art events going on as well, so it should be a good day.
Thank you.
We have a citywide cleanup going on right now until Saturday.
Yes.
Just to piggyback on that, since that seems to be the theme so far, that's through Saturday, and what, do you know the hours tomorrow and Saturday?
Eight to three tomorrow, eight to noon Saturday, at the former, former Woolahands Building, which is the new city garage, it's on, if you're looking at the building, it's on the left-hand side.
And then we just make a water bill with that.
Water bill, and you can bring a whole truckload.
And I very much appreciate that, and I would just ask that maybe in the future when we do these, if we could look at expanding the hours, because I know, like, you know, my husband doesn't get off work till five, so, I mean, I could bring a truck down, but I'm loaded myself, or, you know, so maybe if we could just do one day during the week that has some evening time, I know it's an expensive city, but just as a convenience thing for. Thank you guys for everything.
Thank you, appreciate it.
John Wayne Taylor, center of seven twenty-three Southeast Street, Ironton. First of all, I want to thank council and anyone that was involved with what I had mentioned at the last meeting. Still not as cleaned up as what it should be, it kind of looks like somebody kind of did a little something, but I do appreciate whatever could be done. Also, with that being said, I had a little bug in my ear about C I C, and I was just wondering what that, how, how is that going to benefit, what exactly is it, and how is it going to benefit the city?
I, I, he's the, the C I C chair. C I C is a community improvement corporation, it's a mechanism or tool that municipalities can use to help to acquire properties, help increase the kids, I mean, because they're putting, and getting some things done that haven't been done, but.
So, we, we started our C I C, I think it was last year, maybe two years ago, and now we're starting to get the organizational process together. We organize it for the purpose of, we have a lot of homes that are in disrepair and need to be condemned and torn down, so there's different components that private entity and governmental entities can do independently. So, we established the C I C for the purpose of being able to be a vehicle for transferring property from other people, maybe the land bank, to have that condemnation process mainstream, so we can, so we can get that rolling a little bit faster, and also is an opportunity for us to liquidate property that we may have torn down without going out to bid to the highest bidder, if there's a neighbor or somebody that might be interested in purchasing it from their property, so it's a vehicle that we could use for different, very different things, so that was the idea for doing that, we just had an organizational meeting a couple weeks ago, so in some, we have ideas where we want to go, but it is evolving, instrument right now, so.
So, if, let me just ask you this, since you said that, will the people that actually own the property, are you giving them opportunity to do the repairs or whatever's needed, or if they've already been told?
Actually, actually, with the C I C, they wouldn't be involved without the condemnation.
So, this is after the fact?
Yes, that condemnation would come with the city, and it's my understanding that the city would give quite a bit of notification to those property owners that it is in need of repair, it's how the standardized building codes for the nation, and some things that they need repaired, it's not just going to be, we're tearing this down next week, there you go. So, yes, property owners have an opportunity to repair their homes. I know we're, we're kind of, council has set aside funding for demolition, because there have been properties that have been notified and identified that they need to be torn down. Right now, we're working to coordinate with Land Bank for additional funding to have a bigger impact on our community, but yes, there are several properties that have been identified, we do have some funds set aside for that, and I am hoping that the mayor and his team are able to move on some of that stuff this year, among other things.
Thank you.
Chris?
One other thing to add to that, we, I guess, Ironton Keep Your Eyes Pealed, there, there is the potential for some things to, some, some additional things to develop beyond the C I C, and Nate and Greg mentioned, I can go into more detail during the miscellaneous section, but one thing I wanted to mention with regards to Nate's comment about additional funding, early this week, I submitted an application, a grant application to the Gannett Foundation for a hundred thousand dollars, a community improvement grant, and the intention is to divvy that up between the C I C and other entities that might be able to use that as a kicker, so.
Time.
Sam Whittaker, twenty-one oh seven North Fourth Street, members of council, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for y'all putting in time, being on council, although some of us don't agree with the job you do, we all respect the effort that you give. You know, Ironton has a great website, it's a real tool to distribute information and promote transparency, and I know the pandemic was really hard on everybody. I could one use the web to gather information and keep track of things, and calling attention to the council's website under the heading agendas, it hasn't been updated since August twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-one. Now, I think we're pretty much post-pandemic now, and I'd like for one to see the website updated regularly, and I'd ask council's help to make sure that gets done, not only to help with transparency, but to be able to keep people that can't attend these meetings up to date on everything that's being done. And that's just a simple request from, from me. Thank you for your help, look forward to attending a few more of these meetings in the future.
Mr. Whittaker, I, I do appreciate your time and coming up here to, to speak on, on behalf of people that, that would like to see that, that was addressed at the last council meeting, we are currently working on that, our internet, I, Jacob can probably answer better than I can.
Mr. Bush, mayor, have you been updated on and on that?
No.
Apologies for taking up your time.
No, 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 you're fine, it hasn't been updated, but we're in the process of trying to, I guess, employ somebody to keep up with that.
And I'm glad that you mentioned COVID, during the time, the last time that it was updated, I was doing that at that time, it's not been designated to anyone else, it's not part of the council role, but I was at home and I had a lot of time.
Nor should it be, nor should it be.
But I, I would like to see that happen, too.
Once again, I didn't know it would have been addressed, or I wouldn't have wasted everybody's time. Thank you all, you're good, thank you.
Greg?
Mr. Whittaker, just one more thing. We, we did, we, we did try to start during the pandemic broadcasting our meetings live, like I remember growing up, they used to be on the, on the OU channel, OU declined to do that, and their electronic media, people didn't have the people to do it, et cetera, so we, so we hired a group to come in and do it. During the pandemic, the rules changed on Facebook Live and YouTube, but to broadcast live events, you have to have a certain amount of subscribers, so, correct me if I'm wrong, but we use YouTube now, right? And we, we can't do it live, the minute that our, that our council meeting ends, it's posted by Dave Lucas Communication to, to YouTube, but we, we can't get it live because we don't have enough subscribers, so we were hoping that when Chili was in town, that he'd get us some more subscribers and we'd be able to broadcast them live, but we're, we're trying our very best to, to be transparent, and so, spread the word, go.
Thousand subscribers.
Subscribe to City of Ironton YouTube channel, and, and we can, we can have that live, so.
Like, share, subscribe, it's.
It's ten thousand subscribers or something.
Is it?
Yeah.
Wow.
All right, any other participation? All right, moving on to Nate.
We have Kevin Liza involved, yes.
Oh, is he?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know that, I didn't get that. Kevin, I'm sorry.
Kevin, you got forty seconds.
I didn't know that. I didn't get that.
And then also our invited guests, it's extended time.
I'll try not to take too much of your time here. This is kind of the standard agenda I went through. And I'll just hit on the items that I have updates on from my last meeting here. The Fifth Street Bridge project, that's kind of the driveway is still going on. The ODOT is working on. The South Third Street Waterline project that Michelle mentioned. And I work regularly with Ralph and Michelle on many of these projects. That project, as she indicated, is getting, we hope, close to the EDA allowing us to put it out to bid for construction sometime in the next week, so. The 93 Roundabout project, they, Allard Construction won that bid. When ODOT put it out. We are not involved in the construction aspect of that, but we would anticipate that might start April or May. It does, their contract, the bid documents did have a construction completion date of June 30th. They actually moved that up a couple of months. Pine and First Street, the majority of the work has been done. There was a little bit of funding left, and so the city is having the contractor pave Campbell between Pine and Ellison, so that will be done once weather allows. And then item five, we have three contracts on your agenda, I believe, this evening. And those are related to the consent decree discussions that we've had with, ongoing with the city and the Ohio U.S. EPA. And the sewer model of your system and an analysis of the three and a half alley sewer are items that ODOT, that EPA specifically requested. And they would also like to see, as the city would, the storm pump station number seven put back into service. So those are, those three contracts are related to that. We actually, earlier today, had a kickoff meeting with the mayor and city staff on the Batham Lane Storm Sewer Orchard Sanitary Sewer Project. And that's the one you received the four million dollar grant for. We have begun design. We're on a very tight schedule, given that grant. So we are working closely with the city and moving forward on that. And there will be more to come. Street paving, if you remember, several months ago, Rick Epley and paving was awarded a contract for your Phase One street paving. And they say they're planning to start that work the week of April 10. The next phase of street paving has been scoped out. And I will be presenting a proposal to move that forward, but we would hope to get that project out to bid in short order upon your authorization as well, so that that work could be completed this summer. I'm going to skip nine and 10. There's nothing new on those. 11, which is the Coyote funded street paving, we're just waiting on ODOT to prepare the contract that we and the city would need to enter. They facilitate that. And then item 12, EPA's annual deadline to submit water funding nominations was last Friday. We submitted for the South Third Street Waterline, the 24-inch water line from the plant up to the tank, a 16-inch water line on 10th Street, and then the second interconnect up into Cold Road. Those were all nominated for funding. Item 13, we have presented some preliminary information to the city on comparable cities and how they handle their storm sewer fees for review. And then last but not least, as Michelle indicated, the 500 million, we're continuing to, the Ohio Department of Development solicited consultants to work on those projects in all 32 counties. We were one of the 20 consultants selected. And so they're going through the process of working with all the counties to have the counties request which consultants they want to work with and then get the teams partnered up and to start moving forward. So we hope to be working with Lawrence County and the region on some of those projects. So that's my, wasn't too much longer than five minutes.
Nate?
Got another question on number eight, Phase Two paving. I had several residents say, you know, they would like to have alleyway improvements paved. Right now, as far as the city's resources, you know, we have a rate, it was rabble, da-da-da. If they were looking to have the alley paved, is there a way that they could pool their money on that block and come to an agreement with the paving company that wins the bid for Phase Two of this, to have theirs? And would that be cost beneficial for them to do that, do you think? And what do you think that would look like as far as the process is possible?
I mean, so it's obviously a public right of way, so the city would need to grant them permission to do that order. Would be, I would think, the first step. And yes, we have had a lot of paving projects done in communities where there have been residents who have entered a side contract with that contractor while they're in town to pave their driveway and things like that. So as long as the legal aspect of that is covered, where you've allowed them to do the work on the public right of way.
I'm going to defer this conversation to our solicitor.
Yeah. Oh, did we? Okay, I'm sorry. I missed that.
So that being said, to answer your question, I would think there would be an economies of scale. I mean, if that contractor's here and they have their, you know, there's mobilization involved in them bringing everything here. So as long as that's done early enough in the process, the contractor knows.
I guess that's my next question is, when would the homeowners need to get notification to that paving company at their entrance?
Now. I mean, he's planning, well, he's planning to be here mobilized in three weeks, three to four weeks.
I'm saying for Phase Two.
Oh, for Phase Two. So for Phase Two, like I said, I will get the proposal for that to the mayor in the next few days. So I would imagine that might be on your next agenda for approval. And knowing that, you know, you want that to move forward quickly, we would get that advertisement quickly. So I would think you will not have a construction contract in hand for Phase Two until late April, May.
Okay.
Probably. So that gives some time. But I would say, when you enter that contract with whoever wins that bid, that's probably the time it would be good to say, hey, these five homeowners would like you to do this project over here for them. And then, however, I don't know the legality of it and how that would work, whether those homeowners enter a contract with that contractor. And that's how they've done in some communities, we've worked in when they've done their private driveway. Now, this is a little different, so I'll refer to your legal counsel for that. But as long as he says it's okay, I would think that makes sense.
Kevin, Greg, would it be possible to, if they wanted, if, if they wanted to pave the alley, they were not able to put the money up right now in full, for that to be funded, to do that, and that money assessed on their property taxes? Essentially financing through the property taxes?
That's also a option.
Okay. That funding would have to come through the city upfront and then recoup with the property taxes. Is that correct?
Just like assessment.
And I'm pretty sure, we spoke about this, everybody doesn't have to agree to it. Like, everybody on the block, you know, doesn't have to agree to it, which, you know, I think you want to chip in a little bit. But everybody doesn't necessarily have to agree to it. The assessment gets broken up between the agreeing.
The joining property.
Yes.
By the agreeing of joint properties, right?
They literally get into my alley.
The city's done it several times in the past.
Can we, could we make that an option for our residents? I mean, what are your thoughts on that, Mayor? Well, I mean. I'd like to know what's like estimates are, like, best case scenarios.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you. Yeah, I can tell you what the cost was, you know, per ton or cubic yard for the asphalt for this Phase One.
Right.
And, you know, if you tell me the alley's 12 feet wide by however long, I can tell you, you know, based on that bid, what that cost goes. Because I would imagine if the contractor's here, he's probably going to charge them the same cost that he has charged the city. But since you're doing million-dollar projects, that cost is going to be lower than it would if it was a homeowner's.
That's what I'm saying, if we're doing with this one million dollar Phase Two, that's going to, that would be cost beneficial for our residents at that time.
Yeah, I would say so.
All right. That's something personally I'd like to explore for our residents.
Have whoever is circulating, like in the procedure terms, page, I would just repeat that.
I'd like to have another conversation on it another time, but I'd like to have a standard possible process as far as how to notify your office for interest in this part of the administration.
And I think to make it successful, that, we would need to let that contractor know that, at least by the time you sign a contract with him, so he can plan accordingly. Because if we wait until he's halfway done, it may not work, I mean, cost-wise. But sooner we can let him know the better.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Yep. Thank you.
I have one last thing. This is an extraordinary amount of infrastructure updates and projects and everything. So just everybody involved, Kevin, thank you, mayor, John, Ralph, and CAO, councils, solicitor, council clerk. I mean, this has been a huge undertaking by everybody involved. So I just don't want to downplay how big this list of 14 things actually has been over the past few years. I mean, this is a tremendous amount of work that will move our city forward for years to come, for generations, so.
You've got a lot of good staff and officials to work with, so it makes it a lot easier.
So thanks, everybody involved. This is, I mean, this is a couple pieces of paper, doesn't really shut it in two pieces of paper. But man, it's been a lot of work, and it's a, it means something. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There we go. That's what I like to hear. Any other? Good? All right. Moving on to communications. Craig?
I request no hearing for the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Jacob? We have a request by Craig, and a second by Jacob, to not request a hearing on communications from the High Division of Liquor Control. Roll call please, Martin.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Perry.
Hi.
We will have no hearing on that. Craig?
Oh, just when you get the ordinances.
Okay. Moving on to reports, there are none. Moving on to ordinances. Craig?
I'm moved to remove from the table ordinance 2267 with possible adoption.
Second that. We have a motion by Craig, and a second by myself, to remove from the table ordinance.
2267.
2267. Roll call please.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Perry.
Hi.
Ordinance 2267 has been removed from the, untabling? Craig?
I'd move to adopt ordinance 2267, establishing boundaries for the Central Business District.
Chris?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Craig, and a second by Chris to adopt ordinance 2267. Discussion.
One thing that I'd like to state, I think it's important that the community knows as we have been working and working and working on this here on council with the mayor's office and with the Recovery Community Advisory Board, it was never the intention for us to have anybody that is in need of services or treatment to feel that they cannot get these crucial services. And the areas in question, particularly the Central Business District, I'm in support of services being provided in place that they are zoned properly. Strictly from my state, from my standpoint. The tabling was, I wanted some clarity from the solicitors about where we would stand in a certain direction. And the fact that certain businesses were out of compliance in terms of their housing.
Roll call please.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Perry.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Ordinance 2267 has been adopted. Craig?
Moved to remove from the table ordinance 2268 with possible adoption.
Chris?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Craig, and a second by Chris to remove from the tables ordinance 2268. Roll call please.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Perry.
Hi.
Ordinance 2268 has been removed from the tabling. Craig?
Moved to adopt ordinance 2268, creating a central business district zone for the city of Ironton, Ohio.
Chris?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Craig, and a second by Chris to adopt ordinance 2268. Roll call please.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Perry.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Ordinance 2268 has been adopted. Nate?
I asked, we asked our city engineer for a zoning map update recently. If you can update our city boundaries with this new zone, I appreciate that. Thank you.
A second. A second, man. Appreciate it. Any other discussion? All right. Moving on to ordinances, ordinance 22, or 20, I'm sorry, 2312. Would you please give us first reading, Martin?
Authorizing and directing the mayor to execute on behalf of the city of Ironton a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Ironton and Fraternal Order of Police, the Ohio Labor Council, Inc., and declaring an emergency first reading.
The Finance Committee gave this favorable recommendation, and I would like to suspend the rules and give 2312 second, third reading by title on possible adoption.
Jacob?
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Bob, and a second by Jacob, to suspend the rules for ordinance 2312. Roll call please.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Perry.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
The rules have been suspended for ordinance 2312. Would you please give that second and third reading, please?
Authorizing and directing the mayor to execute on behalf of the city of Ironton a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Ironton and Fraternal Order of Police, the Ohio Labor Council, Inc., and declaring an emergency, second reading. Authorizing and directing the mayor to execute on behalf of the city of Ironton a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Ironton and Fraternal Order of Police, the Ohio Labor Council, and declaring an emergency, third reading.
Bob?
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2312.
Second.
I have a motion by Bob, and a second by Mike to adopt ordinance 2312. Roll call please.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Perry.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Ordinance 2312 has been adopted. Moving on to ordinance 2313. Would you please give that first reading, Martin?
Authorizing and directing the mayor to execute on behalf of the city of Ironton a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Ironton and Ask Me Local 771, and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Bob?
I'd like to, to look, during our Finance Committee meeting, that we've done, give this ordinance 2313 favorable recommendation. And I would suspend the rules and give a second, third reading by title order.
Craig?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Bob, and a second by Craig to suspend the rules for ordinance 2313. Roll call please.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi. Perry.
Hi.
Rules have been suspended for ordinance twenty-three thirteen, would you please give that second and third reading by title only?
Authorizing and directing the mayor to execute on behalf of the City of Ironton a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Ironton and Ask Me Local seven-seven-one and declaring an emergency, second reading. Authorizing and directing the mayor to execute on behalf of the City of Ironton a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Ironton and Ask Me Local seven-seven-one and declaring an emergency, third reading.
Bob?
I'd like to adopt ordinance twenty-three thirteen.
Mike?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Bob, and a second by Mike, to adopt ordinance twenty-three thirteen. Roll call please.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Perry.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Ordinance twenty-three thirteen has been adopted, moving on to ordinance twenty-three fifteen. Please give that first reading, Marty?
Requiring drug rehabilitation facilities to provide proof of certification and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Craig?
Discussion.
Discussion.
I, I believe, uh, Ohio Municipal League and some, and our Ohio Legislature has similar legislation already in the works to blanket the State of Ohio with this, to give some guardrails to the funding of, of that, um, but with, I felt it, I felt it was important to get it on our agenda because once the state legislature gets around to doing something, we might be off of council, so, um, so, that's why I was in full support of getting it on our, on our radar, because we can get it done quicker than they can.
I agree, that was one of the things, you know, in discussion, that a lot of people wanted higher certification for these, you know, rehabilitation facilities, so I think it's also important to get this now as, as quickly as possible. I make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance twenty-three fifteen.
Chris?
I have a motion by myself, and a second by Chris, to suspend the rules for ordinance twenty-three fifteen, and give it a second and third reading. Roll call please.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Perry.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Rules have been suspended for ordinance twenty-three fifteen, would you please give that second and third reading by title only?
Requiring drug rehabilitation facilities to provide proof of certification and declaring an emergency, second reading. Requiring drug rehabilitation facilities to provide proof of certification and declaring an emergency, third reading.
Bob?
Make motion to adopt ordinance twenty-three fifteen.
Craig?
I'll second, I'm on a discussion.
Discussion.
I didn't realize we were going second and third, so, um, I, the other, the other thing is that I've stated numerous times that, uh, clearly, our state and the surrounding states, um, Ohio, West Virginia, Kentucky, have issues, we all have them in our families, in our community, and there's a need for this, but it's, the need is to be done the right way, and the people that have come before council have also expressed that need, whether it's our citizens, or whether it's the, the folks that are doing it the right way in our community, and so, um, I, I would like to see this codified to make people do it the right way.
I agree. Chris?
Took us out on what Mr. Harvey said, um, the folks that are doing it the right way, I'd like to list by name those folks, um, I referenced them in council, we have the Friday afternoon meetings, as in the five, uh, but, uh, the, the five by name are Compass Point Housing, Lawrence County Recovery, Mendon Reed's, Council Center, and Hope Source. The reason I want to mention them by name specifically is there are a small handful of other providers, uh, that have not attempted to cooperate in any way, shape, or form with this body, with the mayor, with the city, with the people in the city, and so I wanted to specifically mention them by name, thank you.
So what you're saying is every one of these places are in compliance with all the city legislation?
I'm saying, I'm saying that every single one of these people has attempted to work.
I'm, I'm asking you, are all these places in compliance with every local piece of legislation?
Looks like one of them might not be.
One?
For sure.
Okay. Have, did you say?
I'll second.
Motion by Bob, and a second by Craig, to adopt ordinance twenty-three fifteen, roll call please.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Perry.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Ordinance twenty-three fifteen has been adopted, moving on to ordinance twenty-three seventeen, would you please give that first reading?
Authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the City of Ironton a sanitary sewer model consulting services agreement with IBI Group and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Bob?
During our Finance Committee meeting this evening, we give twenty-three seventeen a favorable recommendation, so I'd like to ask to suspend the rules, give a second, third reading, with possible adoption.
I have a little bit of discussion about that real quick, um, this is an extremely time sensitive, time sensitive ordinance, correct? If I hear your discussion in the Finance Committee, okay. Craig?
That's all I was going to say.
Okay.
And I'll second.
I have a motion by Bob, and a second by Craig, to suspend the rules, uh, on ordinance twenty-three seventeen, roll call please.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Perry.
Hi.
Rules have been suspended for ordinance twenty-three seventeen, would you please give that second and third reading?
Authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the City of Ironton a sanitary sewer model consulting services agreement with IBI Group and declaring an emergency, second reading. Authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the City of Ironton a sanitary sewer model consulting services agreement with IBI Group and declaring an emergency, third reading.
Bob?
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty-three seventeen.
Mike?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Bob, and a second by Mike, to adopt ordinance twenty-three seventeen, roll call please.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Perry.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Ordinance twenty-three seventeen has been adopted, moving on to ordinance twenty-three eighteen, would you please give that first reading?
Authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the City of Ironton a three and a half alley sewer analysis consulting services agreement with IBI Group and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Bob?
The, the Finance Committee this evening gave ordinance twenty-three eighteen favorable recommendation, and I would like to ask, we suspend the rules and give twenty-three eighteen second, third reading by title only.
Mike?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Bob, and a second by Mike, to suspend the rules for ordinance twenty-three eighteen, roll call please.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Perry.
Hi.
Ordinance twenty-three, uh, eighteen has been suspended, would you please give that second and third reading by title only?
Authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the City of Ironton a three and a half alley sewer analysis consulting services agreement with IBI Group and declaring an emergency, second reading. Authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the City of Ironton a three and a half alley sewer analysis consulting services agreement with IBI Group and declaring an emergency, third reading.
Bob?
Make motion to adopt ordinance twenty-three eighteen.
Craig?
Second.
I have a motion by Bob, and a second by Craig, to adopt ordinance twenty-three eighteen, roll call please.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Perry.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Ordinance twenty-three eighteen has been adopted, moving on to ordinance twenty-three nineteen, would you please give that first reading?
Authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the City of Ironton a storm pump station number seven recommissioned consulting services agreement with IBI Group and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Bob?
The Finance Committee also, uh, give ordinance twenty-three nineteen favorable recommendation, I'd like to suspend the rules, give a second, third reading, with possible adoption.
Chris?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Bob, and a second by Chris, to suspend the rules for ordinance twenty-three nineteen, roll call please.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Perry.
Hi.
Rules have been suspended for ordinance twenty-three nineteen, would you please give that second and third reading by title only?
Authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the City of Ironton a storm pump station number seven recommissioned consulting services agreement with IBI Group and declaring an emergency, second reading. Authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the City of Ironton a storm pump station number seven recommissioned consulting services agreement with IBI Group and declaring an emergency, third reading.
Bob?
Make motion to adopt ordinance twenty-three nineteen.
Mike?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Bob, and a second by Mike, to adopt ordinance twenty-three nineteen, roll call please.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Perry.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Ordinance twenty-three nineteen has been adopted, moving on to resolutions. Marty, would you please give reading to resolution twenty-three fourteen?
Resolution authorizing the approval of the Contract for Services Agreement with the Ironton Lawrence County Area Community Action Organization, Inc., CAO.
Bob?
The Finance Committee give resolution twenty-three fourteen favorable recommendation, and I would like to, uh, make a motion to pass twenty-three fourteen, uh, I'd like to make a comment, uh, this is something, I said earlier, I've been up here for thirty-plus, year forty, I don't know.
The plaques and, plaques and the.
Yeah.
It's a plaques and a wall, we're sitting, I don't want to get here, but anyway, they have done a wonderful job, uh, we discussed this a little while ago, all the projects that they've done for us, and it's thirty-five thousand dollars, I believe, and that is the best thirty-five thousand I think this city ever spends, because it brings in millions.
Agree. Craig?
I'll second, and also, it, they said before in finance that this year roughly fifteen million, so thirty-five thousand for fifteen million.
Exactly.
I'm making a trade anytime.
Yeah, yeah.
Nate?
Put, uh, stand in the.
I have a motion by Bob, and a second by Craig, to pass resolution twenty-three fourteen, roll call please.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk.
Hi.
Perry.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Resolution twenty-three fourteen has passed. Moving on to resolution twenty-three sixteen, would you please give that reading?
Urging the legislative branches of the federal government, as well as the state of Ohio, to enact legislation to further protect the citizens of the City of Ironton, Ohio, from the inherent dangers of a train derailment on the tracks located at our city and declaring an emergency. First reading's not supposed to be over.
Yeah. Has that first reading on the agenda there? I would like to add that, um, after looking into this a little bit, the, I had thought for a while that the city, and I was talking to Mr. Eland about this a couple days ago, I had thought we'd had an incident on the train tracks and the, the city's speed limit for, for train travel was a lot lower than forty miles an hour. Um, I know working on the railroad, it takes an act, basically an act of Congress to, to get anything to happen.
Roughly three years to get them to stop blowing a whistle.
Is that how long it was?
Yes.
But, um, you know, along with this legislation throughout the state, um, I also wouldn't be opposed to, to looking at some, some safety guidelines that, that local, locally council city can do, um, because, man, I think if, if one of those incidents happened, or where we had some, something happen, you know, let's knock on wood, and hopefully that doesn't, but I think the safer we can be, the better, so I, I definitely support this, and would support future, uh, legislation on this topic. If that's that, I'll, I will, uh, make a motion to pass resolution twenty-three sixteen.
I'll second.
Mike, I have a motion by myself, and a second by Mike, to pass resolution twenty-three sixteen. Roll call please.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Perry.
Hi.
Resolution twenty-three sixteen has passed, on miscellaneous? Nate?
I'd like to request that clerks send a signed copy of resolution twenty-three sixteen
I'd like to request that clerk sign a copy of resolution 2316 to Senators Brown, Senator Vance, State Senator Wilkin, and State Representative Stevens.
I'll see. Have, did you get all those names?
I didn't.
Okay. You care to repeat those names, Nate?
Senator Brown, Senator Vance, State Senator Steve Wilkin, I'm sorry, Shane Wilkin, State Senator Jason Stevens, and I'm sorry, Representative Brad Windstrup.
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 Stevens. You said Senator.
I did. Sorry.
I have a motion by Nate and a second by Chris to send a certified, signed.
Certified mayor.
Yeah. Certified, yeah. Letter by State Representative. Roll call please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
And that has passed. Anything else? Miscellaneous, mayor? Chris?
Quick update on the end of the meeting miscellaneous from our last meeting with regards to the CIC that Council McLean and Solicitor got off the ground. One of the other things that, that I've been looking into and I asked for a verbal opinion from the Solicitor and was, was told there's a precedent set, so if this body determines that it's something that we should pursue, we've got a little bit of interest, quite a bit of interest in fact, in the city of Ironton to, let's see what's the right word, not to reestablish, but to establish a new Ironton Port Authority. I understand that there's currently a Lawrence County Port Authority. My interest in pursuing something like this is not as a conflict with what the Lawrence County Port Authority and the LABC does for us. It is to add another hire to the fire. I'd like to also state through this, this research process and different discussions that I've had, I've made sure to keep Council President Haney involved in any inter stepping with. The Finance Director, John Ehlman, and I have had a conversation this morning with the lady from the Parkton CIC. By all accounts, they are really doing things very well there. Theirs has been off the ground for a couple of years now. They've got a couple of projects that their CIC has helped to move things forward up to it, including reclaiming an abandoned gas station, raising that building and using that property to, to be added into the water treatment plant, the pump facility for water treatment plant. So the, the, the concept of incorporating a CIC and Port Authority, it's proving that as far as the Port Authority goes, the precedent's there, but I've spoken to a couple of other communities as well and they assure me that when both entities are moving together, it's, it's the best way to be specific community without any assistance being added to from outside agencies or organizations, that it's, it's the best way to ensure that there are properties available. Recommendation that the two communities that I spoke to is that a CIC focuses on residential properties and much in the way that Mr. Klein explained to Ms. Taylor. And the Port Authority focus primarily on commercial properties. There will obviously be some overlap that happens, but this will be for discussion down line, but I'd really like for this body to consider bringing that into existence, you know, to borrow a phrase from John, maybe not lighting both fuses at the same time, but doing our necessary diligence to, to get that off the ground. The last little thing here with regards to the CIC and Port Authority, you know, one of the, one of the tools that municipalities rely on and get really good results from is setting up a TIF and a TID, tax for funding, tax for district. And essentially what that means is a portion of real estate taxes are collected, go to help finance infrastructure, infrastructure improvements, which the mayor will tell you we're up to our, up to our wasted, working on every single day. You know, the city can make the improvements upfront and then pay us off the back by way of, you know, setting up these TIFs by way of certain TIDs. The invitation still exists from Ms. Chandler in Parkton, that she'd be glad to host us. I spoke to the Solicitor. We probably need to shoot for sometime next month, but she's excited, John, I think you can attest to that, she's excited to work with us, help, you know, us get things off the ground. And I think it's just, it's time for Ironton to get back to helping ourselves while continuing to partner with, with our current economic development partners. Second little thing, Lawrence County Domestic Violence Shelter, I'm working there and it was brought to my attention that the city of Ironton has not donated to the Lawrence County Domestic Violence Shelter in about three years. I'd really like to see a change in how it is established. And mayor, question for you, do we have the ability to, I don't know, send somebody out on patrol looking for the crater sized potholes that not just the ones that are kind of a nuisance? And I ask because I spent about forty minutes earlier helping a guy named Melvin from Rock Hill change a flat tire with a busted rim and about a six or eight inch deep pothole at the corner of Eighth and Burn. That's all I got.
Craig?
I, we don't have to have a date tonight, but I'd request Chairman Pierce for the PUC Committee to, to call at some point before our next council meeting, a PUC meeting to discuss stormwater fees, estimated runoff units, and getting that untied to potable water as quickly as possible.
I agree. Is Mr. Wood still here? Is there, can you give us anything you have?
He, he sent us some stuff.
Okay.
And I, I don't know if it was just the mayor was saying, saying reported, was it just the mayor or is it?
I forwarded to you last.
Okay. I'll forward it to you.
All right.
I told you I'd pick back up the tour.
Well, I, I kind of got excited when Kevin was like, what are you doing? I'm like, all right. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to get working on that. Chris?
There's one thing I left off. We can discuss that offline. Mike, I just want to put it on your radar.
Okay.
One thing I left off with regards to the CIC and potential Port Authority, that Gannett Foundation Community Improvement Grant that I applied for, hundred thousand dollars, you know, if we're awarded that, I'd like to see fifty thousand dollars go to the CIC as a Kickstarter and the other fifty thousand go to the Ironton Port Authority. Thank you.
Nate?
I have two items. First, when we did our permanent budget workshops, we heard from different department heads that had requests for improvements. One of them we heard was was from Dennis with our wastewater treatment plant. There were some critical improvements he needed for that with the help of that fund which is not available. I'd like to, again, I'd like to be back in the PUC, talk about those improvements. John has talked to some different, to our bonding companies as far as financing possibilities for that. I would just like to have a discussion about those improvements. And again, I know we want to talk about our sewer rates holistically, our storm rates also, so I didn't know if that might be an opportunity we could discuss. I know that's going to be, I mean, that's going to be a big meeting, but it's my understanding that there's needs, that it's correct if we're on which critical needs for your plan, right? Okay. So if we could incorporate that into that discussion also.
We were having Nathan Davis come on the first council meeting in May. Do we want to have all this before that? We'd want to get his information first. I think we probably should get his information first. What do you think? I mean, that's, I mean, that's ways, I mean, that's over a month or two months away. I don't know if we want to wait that long or if we want to go ahead and try to get some preliminary stuff out of the way.
Up to you guys.
Let's, let's, we'll send an email out about it and just put some pillars out about possible times when everybody's available because, yeah, there's going to be multiple, that's going to be a, like Nate said, that's going to be a pretty, pretty long meeting.
It maybe should be a workshop instead of a formal meeting.
Second thing I have, mayor and chief, I've had several residents contacting me concerning their children walking on the walking path on the river, on the flood wall, and there's a large, they say a large amount of homeless individuals living there underneath the underpass and some living on the riverfront that maybe not be saying nice things to their kids and so forth. So I've had several people complain about that. I didn't know if that's something we could possibly look into in the short term with those individuals and consult with those kids.
I walked up to them, I saw everybody.
Okay.
Okay.
And then just in the, just me personally, this is in the large scheme of things. I personally have noticed a, a larger amount of homeless individuals in our city. And I don't know if anyone else here has or not as far as sitting on streets, in camp underneath the overpass and the riverbank. And I know it's an issue that is not unique to our community. It's a national, it's a national issue. We're seeing it everywhere. And I know there's not, it's, it's a very tough problem to solve. And sometimes I think we get in our mind, oh, we're just a small town, so we're kind of immune to some of these things, but it's here and I think it's something that we need to address as a community. You know, I'm sympathetic, but at the same time, you know, I'm concerned about health and safety of everyone. So I would like to kind of see if there's an interest for, to have some sort of workshop with the council, mayor, chief, CAO who does emergency housing vouchers, the city mission, you know, stakeholders that are in contact and working with these individuals to see if there's something that we can do to, to help with the situation. Because I don't have any statistics to back it up. I just feel like for me and while I'm hearing from other people, calls I get, that the problem is continuing to, to increase.
Nate? I, I have pictures sent to me that was, that was right over here on Third Street, right under the old Staley's, on, or whatever, and they were, I, I've had pictures and text messages and calls about that also.
I may want to confer with the city of Russell because I think there is a migration between the two cities. They spend time there and then they come here and then they go back.
State of Michigan, ten days suspended, they're there longer than four hours. I had a conversation with the city. I know they aren't here.
Nate, I'm, I'm willing to set up whatever meeting we've got to have to.
And I know we got a lot on our, our plates and on our agenda, but I, I really, I really want to work that into the conversation.
I agree.
I think it's an issue that can use the road, so.
I agree. So whatever, I mean, if, whatever we've got to set up, however we've got to set it up, strategic planning, special council meeting, whatever we've got to do, I'll, yeah, do whatever I can to get that set up with whoever we need to get set up.
Okay. Thank you.
We need to start throwing out dates, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, miscellaneous. I have a few, I just want to run down quickly through some things that's going on date wise. Tomorrow, as well as Saturday, we have the citywide cleanup down at the New City Garage, Third Street. What is that address of that? Mayor, the twenties, that's got to be twenty-nine, thirty, huh?
Twenty-nine, forty.
Twenty-nine, forty? Twenty-nine, forty. Citywide cleanup, eight to three tomorrow. Did you say eight to twelve Saturday?
Yeah, I'll go back down.
Okay. Thank you. March fifteenth, Art for All, the riverfront area. We do have the start, and this is, this is big is, and it, you know, it may cause some traffic, but like I told Mr. Dingus one time, you need to make an omelet, you got to break a couple of eggs. So the first phase of street paving is going to start, or expected to start on April tenth. We have, we've heard about the trash bash, four, twenty-two, twenty-three, and then upcoming second annual Ironton Rec Pickleball Tournament in coordination with Third and Center. So those are, it's just some things to keep on your, your calendar and look out for.
Yeah, Art for All is actually on the twenty-third, three twenty-three.
Three twenty-three?
On eleven.
Why do I have the fifteenth on there?
She's going with the art.
What is it?
The art. Art for All.
Yes.
That's March twenty-third.
March twenty-third?
Is Art for All.
March twenty-third is Art for All?
Yeah.
April twenty-second is the part.
April twenty-second is the part. What I have, what do we have, April, or March fifteenth?
What'd you have for March fifteenth?
I had something on there for March fifteenth. That was my fault.
And also, um, this Saturday is Chili Fest at the Open Door School, and that's in two, I know they would absolutely love to see us.
That's eleven? This, this Saturday?
Saturday.
Okay, so March eleventh, Chili Fest.
And with that in mind, anybody that's bringing their chili, bring your game because I'm entering.
Are you good?
Thanks.
Have a motion by Bob and a second by Chris to adjourn tonight's meeting. Roll call please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you guys for coming down tonight.